Welcome, everyone, to a special city council meeting for Inglewood this January the 15th. No, 17th already. And here tonight, we're going to be interviewing two more firms for our city manager position for the City of Inglewood. And our first firm that's up tonight is CPS. And if you want to all come forward and introduce yourselves.
Mayor, before we begin, I just want to ask that if council will refrain from having any private conversations with any of our candidates that are off-camera, if there are any questions that we need to ask or information we want to share, I want to make sure that that's with all of council so that nothing would come up in a private conversation afterwards that might influence the decision.
Sure. I think, council, are we in agreement with that? No more, no conversations on the side or for the questions? Councilwoman Martinez?
I would consider that a presumption.
Yeah.
I think everybody...
Great. Okay, great. Welcome. And if you want to introduce your team, our plan tonight is to ask questions. There are nine questions over here, I believe, where you have an hour and a half, or an hour and 15 minutes, and we'll leave the last, hopefully, well, whatever, hopefully 15 to 20 minutes. If longer, that's great for you to answer questions. But you introduce yourselves, and then we'll go around and have everybody introduce themselves as well.
That would be great. Thank you very much. We're excited to be here. I'm Deanna Hayne with CPS HR. I am local. We have a strong local presence here in Colorado. And so I'll let the rest of the team introduce, and then we'll go from there.
I'm Gloria Timmons. I'm also local, live in the Erie, Colorado area.
We're moving those closer because that's how it's on the live streaming, and they're just not as sensitive as we'd like them to be. We want to hear you.
Hi, I'm Josh Jones. I'm based in Las Vegas, and I'm an executive recruiter with CPS HR. Coming from your side of the table, I work for cities and counties in the western and midwestern states.
Great. Thank you. So to kick us off tonight, I think I'll go ahead and ask, Councilwoman Berentine, do you want to, do you want us to kick it off, or you want to? Pardon? I'm sorry, you're doing a presentation first, yes. Of course, 20 minutes, 15 to 20 minutes of that, thank you. And we do have, we did post for them all, the, I'm not sure if it's exactly the same, but the slides that you have, so we might be following along on our slides.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Should we wait for you to pull it up on the screen, or should we just dive in? Because you've got the slides in front of you.
I'd go ahead and start and see if they did it up.
That sounds great.
... city clerk@inglewoodco.com.
I did, sorry, dot com. I will...
It should be on the agenda notes.
They just changed it not that long ago, so that's understandable.
But we have it, we have it in the agenda notes. It's downloaded as a...
I'll let you guys speak then.
Okay. Yeah, let's go ahead and have you start then.
Great. I'll kind of get started. So again, thank you for having us here. We, I'm going to just speak a little bit to CPS HR in terms of background, just a few minutes, who we are, where we're from, that kind of thing. I know you've got some slides in there, so I'll probably touch on a few of those things. First of all, we've been in business for over 30 years. We are also a governmental agency ourselves, and so we have a good sense of what it takes of being in the governmental sector. We have a board of directors to whom we report to in the organization, and they're from all over the country. And so we were formed under a joint powers agreement in California, but we have a national footprint. So in addition to main offices in Sacramento, we also operate here in Colorado and Texas and around the nation. So that's just a few things about us in terms of, again, being in the public sector and serving the public sector. We also, our main mission is really to bring human resources excellence into the governmental and nonprofit sector. Of course, one of the major things we do is executive recruitment. It starts with having the right people in the right seats in our governmental organizations, and so we take that really seriously, and we have a good team around us that engages in those activities. We have about 2,000 clients across the nation, and that is both at the federal, state, and local level. So we've got a good base, again, across all governmental sectors. We, again, one of our main things that we do is executive recruitment. We've done over 1,600 executive recruitments. And here in Colorado, we are just building our presence, but we have been here for a number of years. To give you just a few examples of some of the organizations that we've been working with here in Colorado doing executive recruitments would be City of Aurora, City of Manitou Springs, City of Boulder, and a number of other organizations that we've been able to do recruitments for here in Colorado. But we also do recruitments, again, around the nation. So that's just a little bit of background about who we are, kind of what we do. And with that, I really would like to us to be able to spend a majority of our time focusing on the services we offer and our methodology and how we go through our recruitment. So I'm going to turn that over, I think, to Josh next.
So Gloria and I would work together on this recruitment. And it looks like the PowerPoint is up there, so we can go ahead and advance to where we're at.
Is this slider on the side? Did you turn it on?
Say that again.
Slider on the side.
Got it. Okay. All right. So we'll talk about our three-step process. And but first, Gloria and I want to tell you a little more about ourselves. I've been doing work in Colorado in city manager searches. I did the city manager search for Woodland Park a few months ago, and I'm currently doing one for Manitou Springs right now. And then I've, you know, done work all over the western states. And I really enjoy the city manager searches. I mentioned, I've come from your side of the table as a former city manager and deputy county administrator. And I really find these searches to be the most rewarding. It's just very satisfying to work with the mayor and council to help them find their next leader for the city. And so Gloria, do you want to talk a little bit about yourself?
Yeah, in the introductions, I should have said a little bit more. But so I'm, I've been here in Colorado for about 30 years. I spent most of my career at CU Boulder and had an opportunity to come here to the City of Inglewood for some meetings and love your facilities, so really awesome to have this opportunity. But I've been with CPS HR for about three years, and I was able to build on my career as a selection recruitment specialist, now an executive recruiter, but have had an opportunity to just do a lot of work with cities and counties. Most recently, worked with City of Aurora on their city clerk, have helped Joshua at the Manitou Springs, work that he's been doing. And again, we just like to create collaborations. We're really all about bringing our expertise to the table, helping you find the candidates that's going to help you move forward, your organization. So just wanted to share that.
Great. So I'm going to talk about the first two phases of the process, and then Gloria will talk about the third phase. So first, we'll talk about Phase One, which is basically when we will come to the city and we will meet with the mayor, the council, and anybody else who you'd like us to meet with. Probably, that can include senior staff, it can include community leaders. And what the objective of that meeting is to find out the qualities that you're looking for in your next city manager. We want to get those down on paper, make sure there's relative consensus about the direction we're heading. And then if needed, we can do one-on-one meetings as well, if council members or staff members would feel more comfortable talking in a more private setting and explaining their wants and needs in their next city manager, and then we can do that as well. Once we have all that information, we'll pick out the key themes and highlights, and we'll put together a recruitment brochure. Gloria's got a couple of examples here that we'll pass around to show you what that looks like. And there's really two main purposes for that recruitment brochure. One is a marketing piece to attract candidates. We want it to catch their eye and, you know, encourage them to apply. The other main piece is that it's a screening tool. Everything that we've developed in that ideal candidate profile will be what we judge candidates against. So it serves two very important purposes, and will help us to get off to the right start. Once we're ready, once you've approved the brochure, once you like how it looks, the photos, the language, everything in there, then we'll go live with our advertisements and our outreach process. We'll do national advertisements. The CPS HR database of candidates in the administration section actually has over 5,000 names, and so we'll blast things far and wide.
Is that still Phase One?
Yeah, still Phase One, yep. And so that's, so we'll blast things far and wide, but we'll also take a very near and personal approach as well. And that involves working with candidates who we've come to know through other processes, looking in the local region here in the Denver metro area, and really giving candidates everything they need, questions answered, assistance with getting their application in to make it easy and remove any barriers to applying. So with kind of that near and far approach, we hope to capture the maximum number of candidates possible. Next, once we're in the advertising phase and once we're nearing the end of that, we will begin screening the resumes. And again, as I mentioned, we'll use that ideal candidate profile in the recruitment brochure to judge candidates, and I'll select usually between 10 and 15 of the top candidates, and I'll conduct telephone screening interviews with them. And that's where I'll get a chance to get a better feel for their personalities, see what their technical knowledge is, how they answer the questions. And another really important piece of this work is ascertaining their motivations and their interests. We'll find that later on in the process, people can drop out because they weren't aware of everything, maybe a spouse doesn't want to move. So we really try to get ahead of that in the first place and make sure candidates are serious about, you know, coming to Inglewood and that they have all their questions at that point in the recruitment. So after I conduct those telephone screening interviews, we're in Phase Two now, I will put together a report for you, which is, which we call a client report. Basically, it's an A-list and a B-list of the candidates whom I interviewed. And we'll come again, meet with you, and we'll talk about the candidates, and I'll share my insights of what I learned over the phone, and offer my recommendations of who we could invite forward to in-person interviews. Ultimately, it's absolutely up to you who you would like to invite forward. Sometimes someone on the A-list goes down, and someone on the B-list comes up, and it's whatever, you know, we determine as a group. And then once, once we've decided who we want to invite, which is generally eight or less for an in-person process, then we'll begin to develop the selection process in person, and I'll turn that Phase Three over to Gloria now.
Yeah, so as I mentioned before, we're really all about collaboration with you. Who better knows the kind of candidate that will be successful for your city? So based on the information we've collected thus far, we then work with you to develop the best process to evaluate those candidates. We really want your ideal candidates to rise to the top, and so we help you develop the questions. We help you develop what that process might look like, whether you want to do role plays or panel assessments or written exercise, or often some combination of all of those things, because after all, a city manager has a pretty big job, and they need to be able to do a lot of things. And so we work with you, and then we are the ones who coordinate it all for you. We coordinate logistics, we prepare the materials, we sit in on the interview process, we provide ranking opportunities, we really kind of do soup to nuts to help you evaluate those candidates and make sure that those best and most brightest rights rise to the top for you. And we can add additional leadership assessments as part of that, we can do supplemental questionnaires. And the biggest piece, though, is for you to be able to include your stakeholders, whoever they may be, community, directors, obviously, city council, mayor, anyone who you feel needs to have a voice in the process can be part of the assessment process, or they can be part of the after process. We can design it however makes the most sense for your, for your city.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Once we've done that assessment process, you typically will identify maybe two, maybe three finalists, and those finalists will be vetted very thoroughly. It involves reference checks, which we conduct for you. We like to do a very broad brush so that we're speaking not only with colleagues or people that they say, oh, yeah, call, call Josh, he'll, he'll tell you all about me. We ask for supervisory references, so people they've reported to in the past, as well as subordinate references, because we want you to have the full picture of what it's like to work for them, to supervise them, and to work alongside them, which we think is really critical in your decision-making. We also work with a licensed private investigative firm to do thorough background checks that can include not only, you know, criminal and driving, but if necessary, financial and other elements of the background check, education verification as well. And lastly, we assist with the employment negotiations. If you like, again, whatever pieces you need support and help with, we can do that. And we do offer a one-year guarantee. So if for some reason, this wonderful candidate we help you find, something happens where they cannot stay, we will come back and take care of the process for you again at no, well, other than expenses, no additional charge.
So what charges will exist if we were into...
If you had to do it again, like if we pay advertising costs, we'd have to charge the advertising expenses, but there wouldn't be another, you know, base fee for our services.
Just advertising?
Advertising, give me a travel expenses.
Advertising and travel. So the professional flat fee is $17,000, and then that does not get repeated, so that's done and paid for. And so the piece we're talking about is at most, generally, $6,000 to $7,000 of, you know, travel, background checking, advertising. And in a second-round process, with some things done, like the brochure is already done and that sort of thing, you know, we could likely keep that under $3,000 to $4,000, I'd say.
Thank you.
What's our next one? And that's it. So thank you, and we'd love to answer your questions.
Thank you. Since Councilmember Wink did ask a few questions about details from their presentation, why don't we take a few minutes to do that if you think it's not going to come up, particularly in the questions we're going to ask? So any of their council members have further clarifying questions about the slides or process? Councilmember Sierra?
On this very, second-to-last slide, there is a, an asterisk next to criminal. What does that denote?
Yeah, so on the criminal background check, especially at our home base in California, we only do the criminal check once a regional offer of employment has been made. And so that just keeps us safe with HR, so we're not, you know, pulling people out really because of a criminal background.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilwoman Martinez?
Excuse me, you talked about getting the stakeholders involved, possibly community members. Can you tell us some situations or kind of formats that you have done with the community members during a process like this, and what's worked well?
Yeah, so Manitou Springs has been a great example. They had a very intensive two-day process with their candidates and about five interview panels. They consisted of a community open house in the evening where a meet and greet, you know, kind of corner the candidates and get to know them, and just very free-flowing, and I like those, those are fun. We did the same thing in Woodland Park as well with, you know, finger foods and that sort of thing. It's just makes for a very pleasant evening, and you get to see the polished side of the candidates in public. And then what they also did was they did a traditional council panel, they did a senior staff panel, and they did a role-playing exercise, which is kind of fun, you know, come up with this impossible dad situation, you know, say, hey, what are you going to do to fix this? And kind of have actors and see how that goes. So there's, there's many, many ways that we can bring community members into the, into the process and get as many angles and vantage points on the candidates.
Can I ask a follow-up to that?
Sure.
How have you gone about collecting feedback from, particularly from the citizens? How do you gather feedback and share that with council?
Yeah, the most common approach that I've seen is to have a comment card, especially if it's like an open house in a big room like this, that you have comment cards that they can discreetly and confidentially write their thoughts down, pros and cons on different candidates, and then hand those into a person or drop them into a box. And then after the fact, we can go through and read through those and kind of pick out the key themes and highlights.
Thank you. Councilmember Questa?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Dave Questa, pardon me, and I serve District Four. What was the position in Manitou Springs that you guys built?
City administrator. That's, that's current, and in Woodland Park, that was also a city administrative position.
Thank you. And you mentioned the far and wide that you get the notice out. What channels is that released in?
So for starters, our CPS HR database of candidates, which we've built over many years, I mentioned, it's got over 5,000 names in the administration category, others, you know, police chief category, planning director category. So the administrator category is one of our larger ones. So there's a lot of people who will receive direct email with your brochure attached. Also, certainly, national advertising channels like National League of Cities, ICMA, which is the International City County Managers Association, CML here in Colorado. So really everywhere where candidates are going to be looking for jobs and on job boards, we'll have this posted. So in, in most cases, I like to think that anybody who's looking for a city manager job in Colorado at that time is going to know about this position.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Then let's begin with the other, with the questions we have, and if it seems like you've gone over some of this in your slides, just go a little, a little further, maybe with more detail.
Sure.
The first question I'm going to ask Councilmember Berentine to begin with.
Good evening. Appreciate you guys being here. My name is Laura Berentine, I'm District Three. What processes will you use to understand the challenges and opportunities facing the Inglewood community while assessing the various, varied priorities of citizens, council members, and staff?
Great question.
Yeah, so as Josh kind of alluded to in our, in our presentation, we really like to come in and sit with you. We would have meetings and onsite interviews with any of the constituents, stakeholders that you feel we need to hear from. That can include community members, it includes, include city staff, can include pretty much anyone that you, that you suggest. And we do like to take a very broad stroke to meet with folks, give them an opportunity to share feedback about those challenges, about the opportunities, as well as about what they think is necessary in an, in an ideal candidate. And that's what we use to help build that ideal candidate profile.
Could you give us some of the examples of what you were referring to as a broad stroke?
Yeah, yeah, I can, I think one of the most impressive processes that we've conducted just last year was with San Diego, when they were recruiting the executive director for, which was essentially their MPO, Metropolitan Plan Organization. And we basically lived in San Diego for a month in that process. We conducted six public open houses on different nights, different weeks, in all corners of the county of San Diego. And, you know, they were held in various city halls, and we had public comments, the press come even, and, you know, do some camera interviews. So, you know, it certainly doesn't have to be as extensive as it had, but it can be. So it's really just a matter of what the council wants to see. Other councils initially play things a little closer to the vest, and they, you know, determine these qualities of what they're looking for amongst themselves, and then they come out with the brochure, and they kind of share that with the community. So it's really up to you how, how wide you want to open that gate. The only thing I recommend as a recruiter is that if we are going to receive public comment and input, that we need to be prepared to act on that comment and input and be responsive to it, and make sure that people's voices are not just heard, but that, you know, their thoughts and concerns ultimately appear in that recruitment brochure.
Thank you. Great, thank you.
I'm Othaniel Sierra, District One. Describe your understanding of the strategic, operational, and financial importance of the Inglewood city manager position.
Well, having, having been a city manager, it's of paramount importance. As the, the staff leader of the organization, working under your elected official leadership, there's nothing more important than making sure that your strategic vision is being carried out and implemented. As a city manager, you know, I would oftentimes do an annual strategic retreat, and that's to make sure that, you know, we're on the same page. And so, you know, when your new city manager comes in, I would hope that he or she would be well-versed in that process and ready to hit the ground running to meet those needs. Financially, obviously, you can't, you can't do much without financial resources. And I understand that there's always going to be great public screening on how dollars are being spent. And this is, this is a little bit beyond the recruitment, but just kind of putting my manager hat on. There's a lot of ways that you can, you know, share transparency with the community. You can open up your entire budget and even the general ledger and the transactions on your website, and there's different firms and companies that will come in and do that. And it's, it's just one of the most important things that a manager can do is make sure that the vision is in the right place and that the finances are there to back that vision up and support it and achieve objectives. And that's absolutely something in our screening interviews and in the interviews with you that we will ask candidates about, you know, what is your direct experience in those areas, and can you give us concrete examples of successes that you've had?
Thank you.
On to Councilwoman Martinez.
Thanks for being here. My name is Amy Martinez, I'm a council member at large. My question is, and you talked about this a little bit, but describe the steps you will take to recruit the most qualified candidates for this position. I've talked about it quite a bit, but if there's anything you want to elaborate on.
Do you want to add anything?
You know, one of the things that I've found has been helpful, as Josh mentioned, we do a broad outreach, often through email and blasts and those social media, but we also like to ask for, you know, city council and your stakeholders' recommendations. In your line of work, in your experience, you've run across people who you think would be an awesome city manager for you. We want to hear who those people are so that we can reach out to them personally, and if not, ask them to apply. Maybe they know someone who would be a great up-and-comer or who might be someone good to apply. So we do outreach that way as well. I've also found that it's, I've done personal outreach to board members of some of the professional organizations that city managers work with. And, you know, they might get a kind of a generic email blast from us, but if I can follow up with a more personal touch, that often will garner good feedback and suggestions of people who could apply. So that's another example of the outreach that we can do.
I've been told that if you could swap that other mic.
Oh, sorry.
Is that right? Yeah. I was trying to, it's live streaming.
We'll use them both. How about that?
If you want to make it home, we'll be able to hear it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Councilmember Questa has next.
Again, Dave Questa, District Four. Describe in detail your recommended process for selecting and interviewing finalists. At what points in the search process will you seek guidance or feedback from the city council or city staff?
Yeah, so just to kind of reiterate what, what goes on in that process in Phase Two, after we've, we've picked the, what we believe are the best candidates to present to you, we'll again come in person and have a closed-session meeting where we'll, like I said, discuss the insights that we learned from those candidates over the telephone. We could also, you know, share with you what we've learned through media checks, you know, Googling candidates and using our private investigative firm to make sure there's not any skeletons in the closet, things are trying to sweep under the rug, that sort of thing, because we don't want to be surprised once you go public with who your finalists are that there's, you know, something that we didn't know about. Anything else that you would add?
I can't think of anything, no.
Yeah, basically, and, and keep in mind that during the, the month of advertising, it's not as if, as if we're just going to disappear and then come to you and all of a sudden have these candidates. We'll keep you updated on a regular basis about, you know, what does the volume of applications look like, you know, maybe here's a few exciting ones that are coming through. So you'll, you'll have input and, and be updated every step of the way.
Yeah, I think we'd rely on you to tell us how much involvement that you want. You know, maybe there's a key person that's our contact, and we, you know, let them know what's going on, and then they share it further. And you, some, some clients want to know every single step of the way, what's happening every week, and others just want to be updated, you know, more infrequently. So we would rely on you to tell us exactly what you need, and we would, we would provide that.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I'm Cheryl Link, and I'm a member at large.
Can you move your mic a little closer to you?
Yes. I'm Cheryl Link, and I'm a council member at large. So will there be one or... So will there be one or more than one project managers that would be assigned to our city search?
So I, I think that's one of the great things about CPSHR. We're actually a, a company of 100 employees. And so it's not, it's not just a one man or woman shop that's doing everything.
For a project?
Yeah, yes, yeah. So Gloria and I would work together with you on this project. But there's going to be, you know, staff members back in Sacramento that are going to supplement our outreach efforts, our research, the media checks. So there's going to be a lot of capable, qualified staff helping you with this process.
Okay. Very good. So my, the formal writing of the question was, what are the qualifications and experience of the project manager, which is why I asked how many? Who will be handling Inglewood's search? And then how can we be assured that this project manager will prioritize our search and provide direct, consistent, and hands-on management of the process?
So, so one great thing that's recently just come about at CPSHR is we've actually hired a couple of, of new recruiters in the past few months. So what that means is that each recruiter's workload has shrunk quite a bit, which allows us to have a better focus on each of our projects. And I've seen a world of difference even in just the last few months because of that. So it's great, you know? We want to have an appropriate and reasonable number of projects per recruiter so that we can give you the dedicated attention that you deserve. So that's been a very positive, positive shift for us lately. You know, aside from our, just to kind of fully answer the question again, with our backgrounds, I'm doing city manager searches in Washington, California, Arizona. I mentioned the one in Manitou Springs here in Colorado and, and done prior ones in those states as well. So I'm very experienced in, in executive search in general, but especially city manager executive search. And as I mentioned, I, I really do find them to be some of the most rewarding searches. There's a lot more moving pieces. There's, you know, seven, eight, a lot more people to keep updated and, and keep happy and keep informed about the process. But at the end of the process, there's nothing more rewarding than having a successful placement of a new city manager. So I enjoy it.
Go ahead. Anyone do follow up?
Yeah, I have one to follow up with. What percentage of your firm's work is involved in non-municipality, city municipality searches?
Oh, well, so interestingly, as a, as a public organization, we can only do work for the public sector. So we don't do any, any private sector recruitments whatsoever. It's in our charter. Now, if, if we wanted to break that down a little further, municipal organizations make up the vast majority of my recruitment projects. I've done some unique work, for instance, with the Navajo Housing Authority in New Mexico, the Port of Long Beach, you know, kind of on the maritime side. But the vast majority are cities and counties through and through.
Thank you. Mayor Protem.
If I can add just one more real thing to that. You know, the Colorado market is really important to us. And so I just want to add that this would be a very important recruitment for us and you would really find us putting our full resources and expertise towards it. This would be an important recruitment for us and we would do everything we could to get you the best city manager possible.
Yeah, and I, I thought I would just add that this wouldn't be the first time that Josh and I have partnered on a recruitment. So we, we're kind of a good team that way. But as we, as I mentioned, I'm, I'm a local person, so I'm available. I'm just down I-25 from you. And it's, my practice is, as an executive recruiter, only to handle two, maybe three at a time. And right now, I'm finishing up one. So I'm going to be looking for work and could really be dedicated to your particular recruitment.
Clarification. Councilmember Berentine?
So would it be all three of you or just the two of you working on this project?
Primarily be the, the two of us.
Two of us.
Yeah.
And so you would be teaming together and both take the role as the project manager, then?
I think we'd probably have Josh be the project manager and I would service his kind of support, but from a professional standpoint, not from administrative.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Welcome. I'm Rita Russell, at-large council member and Mayor Protem. My question, I think you've addressed this a little bit already, but what is your current workload and availability? And then describe in detail your projected timeline.
Yeah, so I, I also just finished a couple of recruitments this week. So right now, that leaves me with about five, which is really good to be able to take on a new city manager recruitment. And would you add anything else, Gloria? I mean, the capacity, I think, for both of us is a prime, prime moment.
Right. Capacity right now is really good. Yeah, I don't think I have anything to add.
And then the, the timeline to that, that three-phase process. Usually between three and four months. You know, we'll, we'll, we'll get spinning here with the recruitment brochure and our initial onsite meeting to kick things off with you. That'll just take a couple of weeks is all. We'll go live with the advertisements for about a month. And then we'll do the screening and interviewing on my end for a week, put together that client report of the A-list and the B-list candidates, and come again and present that to you. And then we can schedule candidates to come out, fly out, drive out, wherever they're coming from, in about two weeks from that point of time. And if you need a second round to narrow down a little further, then a couple of weeks after that, which takes us to about the three, three and a half month mark.
Thank you.
I'm Blenda Olson, mayor and represent District Two, which is further up to the north and the east. So describe a search that you've had that ended in an unfavorable outcome. What did you learn from that search that you do differently now? And what instructions and support do you give clients to help avoid such an unsuccessful search?
We could probably each share one, huh?
Yeah, you go ahead.
Sure. So I just, I had one, the Port of Long Beach has been, I mentioned them. They've been a very good client. I placed their deputy executive director. And then we just did a cybersecurity manager search, which admittedly is, is not our forte. When I think cybersecurity, I think recruiters who work for Facebook and Google and those sorts of companies in, in Silicon Valley. And so we had a, we had a, a good candidate group. We got, it seems like off the top of my head, about 75 candidates. So it was a very large pool. But ultimately, the, the hiring manager decided that the very technical aspects that she was looking for in a manager just weren't there. And even, you know, it even took a couple of rounds of interviewing for her to ultimately determine that as well. And so, you know, less, you asked for lessons learned and things we would do differently. Even though the, the Port of Long Beach is just a fantastic client for us, you know, I, I think maybe going forward, we would recognize that cybersecurity is, is not our forte and that maybe we wouldn't pursue work in that area. But, you know, city manager recruitment, as I mentioned, is absolutely right up our alley and that's something we're very proficient and confident in our ability to do.
Follow-up.
I've been involved with a lot of failed searches before and they just happened. So have you had any within city managers that, and what have been some of the learnings from those?
Yes. And sometimes, we were just talking about this over dinner actually before we, we came. And, you know, sometimes there's just so much out of your control because you're dealing with people, right? And they make their own decisions. So I had a, a fantastic recruitment down in Arizona for a wonderful community. It went off without a hitch. It was just flawless in every, in every aspect. And then about a month after the ink had dried, after the city manager contract had been approved in public on the city council agenda, the candidate decided to withdraw. And, you know, like I said, it'd been over a month that, that we completely closed the recruitment out. And to get a call that, you know, hey, he's, he's not coming was obviously very disappointing. But at the end of the day, you know, we tried our best, both the city and CPSHR, to, you know, talk to them about any concerns or what's, you know, what's going on and to alleviate those, but ultimately that was the decision he made. So unfortunately, like you said, it, it does happen. But if it does, and just talked to that mayor yesterday down in Arizona, we're going to go right back at it now. We're going to relaunch the ads. We're going to get the brochure back out there and, and revitalize the candidate pool.
Great. Thank you.
One of the things that we try to do to, to try to avoid that, and you alluded to this earlier, was really vetting the candidates. Making sure they understand, oh, you're coming to Colorado from North Carolina. Are you familiar with what the housing market is like here? The cost of living is very different. I mean, we really upfront try to vet them really carefully. At the end of the day, people are going to make decisions for whatever reason. But we, we do try to do our due diligence to help ensure that doesn't happen as, as much as possible.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentine again.
What services can the city expect after completion of the search? And what is your guarantee policy? I think you went over some of that, but if you would again.
Look at each other. Yeah, so once you've made a decision of an offer, we're happy to help you negotiate the offer, help with whatever, you know, finishing touches, whether that's your letter of offer or whatever, we're happy to help with that. We do keep in touch with many of our placements to make sure things are going well. And then the, we have the one-year guarantee that I mentioned, that if for some reason that candidate leaves before that year is out, we'll come back in and do the work for you again.
Yeah, I think the most important and crucial role that, that I play in, in the negotiation process, probably, you know, probably working with the city attorney and, and anybody else, is just bridging that gap between expectations. And it goes, it cuts on both ends, you know? With, with the city, you know, I, I try to help cities understand what the industry expects, you know? City manager candidates in sizable cities are going to expect, you know, probably a car allowance or a fleet vehicle, certainly a severance package that's industry standard, such and such. And then on the candidate side, though, I have to help them understand the city's expectations and what they can offer too. You know, hey, this, this is a, the town with a population of 5,000, you know? They're, they're not going to be able to, to pay X dollar amount. And you have to realize that and take into account the, you know, awesome quality of life that would be in this town and the wonderful staff that you have and the relationship you've already built with the council through the interview process. So, so whether it's on the city side or the candidate side, it's just bridging those expectations and, and making sure that everybody is on the same page. And usually we can do that through the negotiation process. It goes off without a problem.
Thank you. Councilmember Sierra?
I did have one follow-up question. How much of the negotiation process do you think you deal with upfront prior to the hire?
That, you know, that's, that's one kind of neat trick of the trade that, that I like to apply is beginning to get the candidates to think about that before they're even given the offer. So, you know, whether that's onsite, at the interview day, I might pull them aside and start to talk with them about those things, you know? Hey, do you have any, you know, unique requests that you would like in your contract? If so, you know, let me know so that I can make sure the council's aware of that. And I find that weeds people out really effectively because people either haven't even thought about it and are not that serious about relocating. And that's very telling when you ask them that question. Other times, if, you know, someone has a completely outlandish expectation for a salary or whatnot, that's, you know, you know that right off the bat too. So I like, I like to start their wheels turning ahead of time so that by the time that the offer actually comes, that, you know, we're already on the same page about the general and basic terms that each party is expecting. And that's really helpful because if, for some reason, your, your first pick doesn't come through, we can very quickly move to number two runner-up without there being the long lull and an awkward, you know, moment of a few weeks, oh, well, apparently I'm your number two. And sometimes, you know, that kind of rubs people the wrong way. So if we keep things tight and relatively flawless, we can, we can make a successful hire, whether it was your number one or your number two choice.
Thank you. Councilmember Sierra?
The last question of the night, so this could be the why choose you question. So why should we trust you to be the credible ambassador for the city?
Obviously, a, a good finishing question. I'll, I'll share a bit and I'll, I'll let Gloria share some as well. A couple of things that I, I mentioned tonight that I think really set CPSHR apart. One is just the type of organization that we are. We're very unique in that we are a, a public organization like yourselves. So while we are self-sustaining and, and we certainly have a bottom line to meet, we really live public values. Many, many of our, our staff members come from the public sector, cities and counties. And, and so that, those ethics, those public values, it's just in our blood. And I, it just makes me very proud to be part of an organization like that and to still be in the public sector. The other thing I mentioned is our size. I think, I think, you know, having a staff of 100 can, or staff members is every bit important because we have the capacity to do a lot of organic grassroots research, you know, building candidate lists for you. You know, it's not just one person managing a dozen projects at, at the same time and, you know, you just can't do that much with, with your, with your own time. But we have lots of qualified staff members that can supplement our efforts. So those are a, a couple of things that really stand out to me. The other thing is that we have a very active candidate pipeline right now. I mentioned the current searches I'm doing in Arizona, Washington, California, and here in Colorado. So there's a very active pipeline that we can tap into on day one. And that's just going to, to speed up the process of getting referrals, of getting people interested, and getting you the maximum number of candidates possible.
Yeah, I guess I'll just add that, you know, we really believe in transparency and, and doing business with a lot of integrity. And I think for, for me personally, it's about relationships. You know, to be an effective recruiter and to work well with cities and counties, you have to develop relationships. And what better way for you to, to learn who we are and how we can help you and trust us than developing that relationship? And on the flip side, developing the relationships with the candidates. Because then they, they take our calls and they, we get to know them better. And when it comes time to say, oh, well, what happened and why can't you move forward? Or how can we help you be successful in this situation? We've developed that relationship and so that helps us to be more successful in bringing them here rather than having something happen and, and they fail to come. So I think that's all we would add. Do you have anything to add?
The only other thing I'd add, so I'm part of the other 100, maybe that is not working on a specific recruitment, but we're here, there's a lot of bench strength. So we're here to help and to step in and to collaborate as an organization and make sure that the best outcome can be possible for your city. Whether that's, you know, you have a, a process set up and there's a huge snowstorm and we can't get Josh into town, but you still need to go forward. We're going to make that happen and we're going to bring the right resources to ensure that happens. So I think our, our local presence is helpful and just that bench strength that we bring to the table. And again, our, our love for the public sector, and really I, I mean that very sincerely. CPSHR has such a wonderful culture of just passion for being in the public sector and the work that all of you do. We know it's really hard work and so we're here to support that.
Why don't you just talk a little bit about what happened in Manitou Springs? So in Manitou Springs, we started off with a city manager search, just like this. And what's happened now?
Yeah. With Manitou Springs, we really have partnered with them to help in a number of different areas to bolster some things that are going on in their organization that they need help with right now. For instance, we're helping them with some general HR assistance and work in terms of supporting their organization from a recruiting standpoint, from a compensation standpoint, from an employee relations standpoint. So our partnership and our collaboration and the relationships we've built have led to that trusting partnership where they're asking us to help with other work as well. That's not the expectation. We're here to do what you need to get done and to focus on your priorities and what you need, and that'll be the executive recruitment. But again, we bring a lot of other things to the table as well, should those be needs in the future.
Thank you. I'm going to allow for five minutes if there's any more questions, if there are any, that relate to the questions in terms of clarifying anything further that you heard. Anything else? I think I had one. That's why I was asked. I think you mentioned in your presentation and then under our, our question about what services can we expect, you talked about some kind of assessment. can we expect, you talked about some kind of assessments. Was that a leadership assessments or personality or what were you referring to there? I may have missed it.
Yeah, so one of the most popular tools that we use is it's actually a national brand and platform, it's the Hogan Leadership Assessments, if you're familiar with those. And so those can be helpful, I think, especially at the finalist stage when you're down to maybe three candidates. And if we have the candidates take those, it can reveal new things that you may not have seen in the in-person interview. More often, I think it confirms, you know, your kind of underlying thoughts and suspicions about a candidate. Because when you get that report, it's going to help to differentiate the candidates a little bit. We were just talking about this at dinner. I don't think it necessarily wins or loses the job for any candidate. I mean, that's mostly going to come through the interview process. But it can really kind of bring a peace of mind, I think, to you as a council, that you've done your due diligence, that, you know, there's some objective, quantifiable data behind this candidate that confirms what we feel about them.
Anybody else? Looks like it's up to you. What kind of questions would you have for us?
Well, I think the city is in a great spot. I mean, we do work for Manitou Springs, you know, which is population 5,000. I've done work, I mentioned, for San Diego, the eighth largest city in the country and everywhere in between. And I think you're at a great spot, being with your population just over 30,000, being in the Denver metro area. And for a community of 30,000, I've been very impressed in just what I've read and seen. You pack a lot in. This wonderful facility, all the public transit options that run through the community is very impressive. And so I think that's going to be very attractive to candidates. It can be hard to recruit in rural areas, it can be hard to recruit for the San Diegos because, you know, how many people are qualified to run an organization that big? But you're a very good sweet spot. So to that point, you know, one question would just be, what other kinds of highlights would you want candidates to know about as they consider this opportunity? Both, you know, personal, quality of life highlights, and also, you know, professional opportunities where they may say, wow, they've got this in their five-year strategic plan, I want to come and make my mark and make that happen here.
Good question, council. Anybody want to jump at that one?
Well...
Councilmember Wink?
Yes, thank you. I think several of us might, or a few of us might have different points of view on this. That's why we make a good council, balance one another. In my view, as a newer member to the council, being here just over a year, I think in terms of quality of life, it's sort of a given based on the Colorado area and the opportunities year-round for enjoyment of our climates and our surroundings. Professionally, I would say the personal is tied to that quality of life aspect, but professionally, as you alluded to, Josh Jones, because the city is at this sort of point of movement, development of growth, the particular point of growth where we are, I think it could say a lot for somebody's resume and professional history to have been the city manager of a city, to see that growth through or to see the transition through, whatever the transition looks like, I can't predict. But to have been here and to lead when a city's come as far as we've come with the prospective options that are before us, I think that's going to mean a lot, I think. In terms of the experience, one's going to go through the learning, the growing, the expertise one can apply to our particular situation of whatever that transition looks like. And I think that it's vastly multifaceted, so all of what's entailed and where Inglewood might go in the next five, 10 years, I think, would be very rich on someone's professional dossier as city manager here.
Anybody else?
I would say that we have some incredible opportunities here for a professional realm. We have this building and the area around it and the land that has, is under transition right now that's kind of contiguous to this, that's gone through a bankruptcy and a repurchasing process that we're in the middle of watching. So there's huge opportunities to think through how it follows the citizens' wishes as well as the market and how do we influence that. We don't, can't tell people what to do except unless they ask for something that is extra than what the land has. So there's that opportunity. There are challenges within being a city that I think everyone would say that they love their neighborhoods and they love the small-town feel and yet it's in a metro area. And there's an unusual, an expected, unusual, expected tension there, pretty big tension of lots of people moving. Housing crisis, everybody wants to stay small, again, there's lots of people around here, so how do we actually do our development, which is all infill or redevelopment here? And so there's a challenge, there are challenges there. Somebody likes to problem solve, this is a great place for that kind of thing. A lot of professional kind of edge things, it's not just, you know, social things, but so those would be some of the things. I also think that one thing that has really been up and coming in the city is some major places, right, like our Broadway area and a few others around here in the arts, but also our schools, and we don't oversee that, but there's some cool things happening in our school system that I think is a plus for the area. Citizens have really invested a lot of money physically supporting them. And so I think we're at a cusp of one of our major systems. We have four school systems.
Anybody else want to add more? All right, another question?
Any questions?
I was going to ask about challenges and opportunities, but you just covered that a little bit.
I'm sure if you ask for challenges and opportunities, maybe that gives another perspective. I don't know if you have, anybody else want to suggest anything there?
I can add. So in terms of challenges, I think it's very similar to what a lot of other cities are. So we're sales tax dependent in terms of revenues. But we also have a, in terms of just some of the issues that we're experiencing, it could be the infrastructure. So we're seeing a lot of that around the city. How are we going to pay for a lot of the infrastructure that needs repair or just updating when there's only an X amount of dollars within the current general fund? So those are some of the things that we're seeing. And then, you know, we talked about some of the other issues that are plaguing bigger cities that are kind of seeping in here. You know, obviously, some of the homeless issues or the growth issues, traffic, that type of thing, where we are trying to keep a smaller-town feel and not really become Denver, but having, having some of the issues that are affecting Denver kind of seep into Inglewood as well. So those are some of the things that we're seeing in terms of some of the weaknesses or threats to the city in a sense, right?
Yeah. Good insight.
Councilmember Krista?
Thank you. I'm going to build on what Councilmember Sierra said a little bit. The Denver Post is the primary newspaper here in Colorado, and over the weekend, they had an article how Denver used to dub itself "the city within a park." And in 1970, 30% of the city was paved. It's currently at 50. They expect it to be 70% by 2050. That to me is going to spill more and more people into the suburbs of Denver, thus being the primary one to the south. So for me, it's all the things that Athena just mentioned, but not planning for five years, but 10, 20 years down the road. And I think it's that long view that it gets trickier, it gets blurrier the further you go out. And just really having that forward-thinking mind that can see us, you know, a decade, two decades down the road, especially as we embark on these big developments that we're going to have, especially with the building that we sit in here and the surrounding area. So that's what I'd be looking for there, somebody who can recognize those challenges and then present those solutions. And again, working very closely with council and the citizens to find the best solutions to move forward with them. Thank you.
And maybe I'd ask maybe one last question unless you all have some more. You know, one of the things that CPSHR really prides ourselves in is being very agile and flexible and really customizing to what our clients and customers need and want. So I'm curious, as you've heard tonight, our process and our model and methodology, which is built around very solid reasons that we do the things the way that we do them, but we can be flexible. Was there anything about our process or is there anything that you've been hoping to see in your city manager search process that you didn't hear tonight? Is there anything that you'd like to see customized or is important to you that might be a little bit more out of the ordinary?
Councilmember Verentain?
We had a recent experience that makes us somewhat sensitive to people knowing what the job qualifications are to understand and have that vetted, especially when it comes to salary and that that's upfront so that that's not something that comes in. And I got the impression a little that that might be a little bit later and maybe I, maybe that wasn't enough information. So if you want to expound on that, that would, expand on that, that would be, that might be good because that's of a huge concern. If there is a huge difference in there, then we've wasted a lot of time and people don't like to be second.
Yeah, that can absolutely be part of the very first initial phase is, I'm sure you have a salary range right now, but, you know, does it need updating? Is it market competitive? And that's something that we can look off right off the bat before the ads go out, before the brochure is done, and to make sure that it's where you want it to be budget-wise, but also, you know, where we may recommend that it should be for market competitiveness. It's, you know, like any good or service, you know, it's somewhat inflationary and it just goes up over time. I'm just amazed, even just being out of the field for a few years and recruiting it, how much it has changed. Manitou Springs, for instance, you'll find on their brochure that their salary is advertised as up to $150,000 for a town of 5,000, for a population 5,000. That's, you know, just very competitive, it's very high and, you know, however many years ago, I would have never dreamed that for a town of 5,000 that the city manager would make 150K. So that's absolutely a very important point. And candidates, you know, will make sure they're very aware of that salary range, that they can work within that. And usually, it's in their best interest to not continue and they'll self-select out if it's, you know, out of the ballpark. So we can, we'll definitely minimize any late-stage concerns about the salary not being right.
That's definitely part of our process to evaluate your, look at your job description and make sure the qualifications match with what you need alongside the salary.
Councilmember Verentain did that answer.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Sierra?
Thank you for asking this question because one of the things that I was actually hoping to see tonight was just, you know, some projects that you've worked on in the past that are for city managers for our type of city, similar population, a suburb to a bigger city, that type of thing. And I don't think we really touched on that today. You mentioned Manitou Springs, but they are 5,000 people. So, and you also mentioned that you do have a pipeline of candidates, but are those pipeline candidates right for our size city?
Yeah.
And for what our requirements are. So can you elaborate more on other similar cities that you have done recruitment for, for the city manager position?
You bet. A couple of my best examples are going to be the town of Paradise Valley, Arizona, which is in the Phoenix metro area, and then East Palo Alto, which is in the Bay Area sandwiched between San Francisco and San Jose. In fact, East Palo Alto is right at your size, about 30,000 population. And we're getting a very good national commitment from candidates all over the country who are interested in that position. And keep in mind, you know, Silicon Valley's got million-dollar homes, so there's a huge barrier to relocating there. And it's still getting a very good response, 60 applications plus. So, and that's from city managers, assistant city managers, high-level department heads. So that will be a very good example to look at. Paradise Valley is very much the same, 70-plus in that process, candidates from across the country as well as in-state. I think, I think there's a, definitely a hometown advantage to someone who would have Colorado experience. City managers cross state lines all the time and they're very adept at getting up to speed on different quirks and state laws and that sort of thing. But if someone's in Colorado already, that's just a huge leg up on and having a quicker startup time. Thinking about my own experience, my first job professionally out of graduate school was with the city of Fort Collins. And, you know, I can think right now of a couple of deputy and assistant city managers who would be fantastic candidates, you know, if they wanted to take that next step in their careers and become a city manager. And so we'll definitely pull from our past experiences, current pools, and find candidates who are ready for this type of community.
Councilmember Wink?
Thank you, mayor. I don't have any particular questions that I wanted answered that haven't been answered. I just want to clarify one of your final statements about being an agile organization. And so, do you mean agile in terms of the constant cadences of value delivery and feedback and the inspection and adaption and the risk management before you begin your projects and the, you know, the general economic model of capacity, velocity, and delivery? I work in software, so do you mean that or do you mean your quick...
Yeah, so I'll take a...
To what degree do you mean that?
I'll take a stab at answering that a little bit and please jump in, too. So, you know, our world is changing, we all know that. We see a lot of things that are changing at just higher and higher velocities. So it is staying up to date on what's going on, what we need to do as an organization to support the governmental agencies out there. And so we're constantly trying, whether it's technology, I'll give you an example, right now, our organization is going through a major transformation technologically. And so we're putting in place a lot of new tools to help us collaborate better as an organization. We do have a national footprint, so we operate all over the United States, as we've talked about, and we have employees and project consultants all over. So we try to use technology to its optimal internally in terms of how do we share information, how do we collaborate, how do we keep in tune with what our clients and our customers are needing and wanting and desiring because things are moving so fast. So technology would be an example of a way that we're doing that. I don't know if there's anything else that the two of you'd like to share?
Yeah, when I think about agility, I think about in terms of the recruitment process itself. And what I mean by that is being able to scale up to the San Diegos and the San Osas and scale down to the Manitou Springs and the Navajo Housing Authority and everywhere in between. And as I mentioned, you know, I've ran processes with five interview panels and I've ran processes where it's just the council and that's it. And it's all in closed session and there's nobody else. So just being able to meet your desires and your needs for what you want to see is, I think, of paramount importance and being flexible. So we take great pride in that.
Very good, thank you.
Any further questions? Do you have any closing remarks?
I think, just thank you very much for the opportunity to come here. You picked a great day, 50-plus degrees, sunny. It was colder in Vegas than it was here, believe it or not. That doesn't happen too often, so. But it was just great to get to know you all over the course of the evening and we really appreciate it.
Thank you for the opportunity.
We'd be very excited to work with the city, so thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me. Have safe trips home, wherever you're going, close and far.
Herey.
Take care. You, too. Have a great MLK weekend. All right, we'll take a break, a little stretch.
Number three. Turn it off. You're now IT. Yeah, I want to just.
Why don't you stand there and move it back every time they talk?
It's still clicking.
Yeah, why does it do that sometimes?
I don't know.
Every time he moved his hands, that's when it, but that was that one. So I don't know if it was just the air.
I was wondering if it was like this.
Blap, 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 test, test, test. Well, and there's a chance that these have gotten like dropped too and that's why some. You break it, you fix it?
No, you bought it. It's wrong. You need some different ones.
I want the goose neck ones. Just for, you know, when you have people that, that mic needs to be over here.
Well, I'm going to like.
This one here. You guys are facing that way because you can't hear her. This needs to be here.
Can you hear me?
You're not bad.
You're not bad.
You're not bad. Oh, thank you, man.
You're not bad.
That's pretty low sometimes.
Have you met Sam?
First, I think we'll still take a bit of a break. No, no, that's fine.
We're in our element right now.
Six, seven minutes maybe? Start 10 minutes early.
I got that.
That was a mistake.
Hi.
Nice to meet you.
Catherine Tuck Parish.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Get some water.
Oh, hey, you want some leftover nitrogen and brewed coffee?
I won't offer you a whiskey.
I want your tea.
Thank you so much.
And I understand you don't have a presentation.
Right.
No.
Yes.
No.
Sometimes you take Fridays off.
No presentation.
Now, when I take vacation, I take a break.
They can't. You can't.
Oh, Lord.
BS, BS.
Oh, yes, yes.
I'm sure.
Oh, that's all right.
Maybe.
I don't even know. You leave. They give them a five. They leave.
No, when I take vacation, I take, you know, my office is like, gets like webcombs in the door.
You're actually checking your work.
I broke my phone.
So active.
Oh, I do check my email.
Yeah.
I do that.
Because it's in your, I mean, you see a number next to your, you'll watch.
I check my email on vacation, but I'm out of the country, so nothing I can do.
Yeah. Unless it's, yeah, unless it's on Wi-Fi right over here, like the coffee shop or something like that.
And what I was saying, I don't take one day at a time. I take a week at a time.
Yeah.
That's what I was saying. I don't take it's vacations. That's what holidays are for.
Yeah, that's why I don't understand. People are like, oh, I don't feel like coming out today. I'm like, okay, unless you're going to do something. You're just going to sit at home and be nothing. What's the purpose of that?
It's nice to sit at home and do nothing.
No, I don't give that. You've got to be doing something. Save some time.
I don't want to rest on a very big class.
Save for vacation.
No.
That's not a vacation.
Exactly. And it's vacation is not a vacation.
It's not.
I always buy vacations as vacations.
Yeah.
That's what holds it.
Well, that's what I want to test it. So that's probably because she's sick.
Me?
Yeah.
We used to.
I don't know.
I'll be back maybe.
Okay.
We're going to go walk around.
You going to go walk around?
We're going to take a step set.
Yeah, what is your step set?
We're going to start in a couple minutes.
I'm already clicked it. It's good to go.
Wait, shouldn't you be?
Thank you.
All about Sam now.
Is it really?
Yep. So you can start when you're ready. I'm going to be back.
All right.
Oh, 6,500.
In town.
Yeah.
Are they happy?
I think so.
I think she's running, running through the trees.
Oh, yeah.
There's a happy child out there.
Happy children.
Are they happy?
I think so.
I think she's running, running through the trees.
Oh, yeah.
They were crying.
There's a happy child out there.
His brother is inside until the parents are taking turns making both children happy. It's kind of fun to see.
That was that story.
Yeah, for sure. For sure.
Your kids did pretty well, I thought, didn't they?
Hand-to-hand defense, we call it in my family.
Probably spent some more time in there than we did, but they get antsy quick.
Yeah.
I don't know if their attention to detail was quite there to observe as many things as they had going on in there. It was neat though.
When'd you go?
Ah, shoot. Recently.
It was last Thursday night, wasn't it? We both were there at the same time.
It wasn't last Thursday night. Weeks seemed like months.
Seems like a long time.
But it was neat. I've heard it sold out and that my mom was trying to get tickets for Monday.
They've been sold out every night from like 5:00 to 10:00.
Tough to get in.
So is there like a time? Do you have to sign up for?
Yeah, they can.
Trying to trouble you.
It only takes a certain number in there and it would be miserable if it was.
Okay, I'm going to have to do one.
Okay.
Mayor Protim, did you catch the cough or no? Was it cold or cough this morning?
Well, you know, I've had this cough a little bit. I don't know if it's just this chronic thing that I always have or it seems like it's worse right now.
Like I don't feel sick, but I just cough.
Right, exactly.
With a cough.
Exactly. It's frustrating. And then my throat's pretty dry. I was looking for cough drops in my purse a few minutes ago because I thought I'm going to have a coughing smell as soon as it's my turn.
Right. Yeah, but I talk too loud and I'll, I'll start coughing. I had a coughing fit today. I was like, wow. Try to be quiet side.
We're not going to give you one.
I'm for sure. Streaming. And maybe this, sharing with it too, who knows? Great, thank you. We're all back to continue with our search firm interviews tonight for Englewood. And tonight we have, the second firm is the Novak firm, right? And you want to introduce yourself and a little bit about yourself and then we'll allow you to do your presentation and then we'll have question and answers, question time and some questions for you two.
My name is Catherine Tuck Parish. I'm with the Novak Consulting Group. I'm the executive search practitioner. I briefly about, our firm is a 100% women-owned business and we are located in Cincinnati, Ohio. However, I am physically located in the DC area, although I am wherever the job is. So I travel all the time. My background and all of our backgrounds are in local government. We think of ourselves as working for lots of local governments at once and over time, as opposed to being in the private sector, that may tell you a little bit about our profitability. But it is really what our passion is, is to help serve the people that are serving your residents to make sure that your residents get the right services. So we do strategic planning. We help councils and sometimes staff bodies make sure that they have the right vision and goals that they can set. So you know kind of where the right path is that you're headed. We do executive search because you need the right people to be in those positions to make those plans happen. And then we do organizational assessment to make sure that you're always looking at improving your processes. We do staffing studies, financial models, things like that. So those are our three practice areas. I lead the executive search practice area. I have been doing that for about nine years. I, before that, I was in local government for 20 years from, with cities and counties. I also worked for the International City and County Management Association and assisted local government charter commissions that were looking at formal government issues and also was the ethics advisor. So that is my background and I'm very pleased to be here.
Welcome. We're glad to have you. Do you want to hear us?
Yes.
Go around quickly first. I'm Lynda Olson, Mayor, and go to my left here. Rep. Verentain, District 3.
Old Daniel Sierra, District 1.
Amy Martinez, at large.
Dave Questa, District 4.
I'm Cheryl Wink and I'm a member at large.
Rita Russell, I'm councilmember at large and Mayor Protim.
We don't have a PowerPoint, right? You have something else you want to give us.
Correct.
So go ahead and we'll have 15 to 20 minutes for you to do presentation and then we'll spend the time asking questions, going around, and then leave the time for you to.
Perfect. I prefer to have a conversation and look at you and kind of see what is interesting to you. And I'm not a big fan of PowerPoint, so excuse me for not doing that. I want to just tell you briefly about our process. I think it's much more important that I hear the questions that you have, but this may help sort of focus some of the questions you might have. First, I would say I've done over 120, our firm has done over 125 searches. I've done all but about five. So we have, that's something that you learn each time you do a search. You definitely learn from each one. I've done a number in Colorado. Most recently, I finished the Lafayette search for their city administrator. I've done the Lewisville city manager search and two other department heads there. And I'm about to kick off a process in Loveland for their chief financial officer. I've done a couple of other departments there in Loveland. They just have us do a partial search so we kind of get them up to where they're going to invite for interviews and they carry the interview process out for department heads. And I've also done the HR director search in Boulder. So familiar as, as you, in our firm, you have to learn lots of state guidelines and information laws and open records. And so I have worked in a number of states that have a variety of them and familiar somewhat with yours, although I'm not an attorney. And I work closely to make sure that our process is not in violation of any of those things. The last thing you need is to worry about that. So generally, the way that I would start each search is I would have a phone conversation with each one of you so that I could get to know a little bit about what's important to you and what you think is going well, what could go better, what you're looking for in a manager. That helps me when I come in person to augment the meeting that we would have as a body. I have also worked with lots of different kinds of community engagement. Just kind of two, two points where it makes sense to have community engagement if you're going to do that. And so those are some of the questions that I would ask you all. And as we set up what the recruitment would look like, we would want to kind of set what that community engagement looks like up front and also stick to a plan that we would set out. So I would develop a recruitment plan for you. That would highlight the areas we're going to target, our, our direct outreach. You cannot just put an ad out there and people come. You have to really look for people who already have good jobs and encourage them to come to where you are so that you get the best folks that are out there. I also would put together, of course, the recruitment brochure itself. I think we provided a sample and a list of first-year goals. That's something that I develop with the council. I think it's very important. It not only helps clarify that you all are on the same page of what you think the most important things are for the manager to accomplish the first year. It helps me to, as I am talking with folks, excuse me, to clarify what they will, what the top priorities are so it can really engage people and get them excited about the work that is to be done. It helps me when I am and others in our firm that are also looking at applicants to screen. I use it in my initial phone interviews. It may be part of what you use for our writing exercise or, you know, so we use that all the way through. And then, of course, it helps the candidate, once they come as manager, to know at least initially what those goals are. Not that they can't change over time, but at least gives them kind of head start on that. So those are the three main documents that we would provide. And you all would be, we would talk about how you would want to approve those and who would need to vet those as well. We do the social search process in terms of they would come to our website and apply online with us. We would work with your folks to make sure that there is a place on your website where anyone who knows you have an opening, they may go there. Just go straight to our website. Our, once we have done our outreach and that really kind of happens throughout the process, there's a whole lot right up front when we're posting it, but there's also a lot throughout as we begin to talk with folks and hear back, well, I'm not interested, but let's talk to, you might want to talk to so-and-so. And I think that one of the, one of the benefits of our firm having three practice areas is we have some of the, we have clients all over the country and some of them are pretty amazing communities and they know who really good folks are. And so we use those, that client network to engage and try to entertain and entice other folks to come. And so that we find is very helpful. We do not recruit folks who have gone through our process in some way. So we would never do that. We would never go back and if you were to hire us, we're not going to try to recruit your city manager for another position. But we have these organizational assessment and strategic planning clients that are very helpful in helping us identify individuals who, who might be really good in addition to our direct outreach. When we have evaluated the candidates, we will bring you in a, in a meeting and we'll talk about what that process looks like and who's involved in that. But we would bring you kind of a profile for each one. That would include the materials they provided, but it would also include information that we gathered from the phone interview so that you have some additional, kind of the benefit of a first interview. And then also media search on them so you know, you can, of course, look at all the good stuff, but we're trying to find the stuff that might be controversial or something you would want to know about ahead of time before you make a decision about who you would invite for interviews. We then would work with you and as you narrow that group down, I believe in the RFPUS for eight to 10, narrowing it down to four to six, whatever, if those are the magic numbers, we will meet those. There may be, we may actually talk to more folks than that. We will help you and facilitate that whole process. And by we, I mean me because I will be the one doing this and you, I will be the one who is here. We do, I do want to tell you about our team in a minute, but I want to finish the process. So after you decide who you would like to interview and assuming that you announce finalists publicly, we would work with you on making sure all those folks knew they were going to be announced publicly before that happened in a way that complies with, with public information laws. Our job is to get you the best candidates. And to get you the best candidates, we have to make sure they know exactly when and what is going to happen so they can make a good decision about whether they want to move forward in the process. We would then work with you to develop, we would develop interview questions, exercises, writing, whatever it is, all of this- We do, I do want to tell you about our team in a minute, but I want to finish the process. So after you decide who you would like to interview, and assuming that you announce finalists publicly, we would work with you on making sure all those folks knew they were going to be announced publicly before that happened in a way that complies with, with public information laws. Our job is to get you the best candidates, and to get you the best candidates, we have to make sure they know exactly when and what is going to happen so they can make a good decision about whether they want to move forward in the process. We would then work with you to develop, we would develop interview questions, exercises, writing, whatever it is. All of this, we would have kind of developed upfront. We would review that with you again, and then we would provide you with all the materials you need for those interviews. If there is community engagement in the interview part of the process, at that stage, we would also work with you to make sure that folks had information about the candidates. For example, in Lewisville, we provided kind of a, just a bio sheet, so anyone who attended a community reception or a public interview had information about them that they could get. It was personal, too, but it allowed them to get that information. And we would solicit feedback from whoever is involved in the process so that you could get the benefit. Although I do think it's very important that you all are the ones selecting the manager. It is hard enough to govern. It is really hard to supervise as a group, and it's maybe even harder to hire as a group. And so we want, it's, it's important that you all retain that as your job to hire, which I know you take this very seriously. But anyone who wants to participate in that process, we would want to gather feedback for you. We then would work with you and probably your attorney to work through the negotiations of an employment agreement and present the offer. So those are the things that-
I think the sound is just going in and out a little too much. Is it right next to you in front of your, yeah, okay, yeah. Maybe give her mine, and I'll use the bad one. Sorry for this.
No problem.
I can hear you, we can probably hear you fine, it's just a public mic here.
Understood. So we would work with you all the way through the process. I do want to let you know about our team. They're awesome. You won't see them because we think it's important that, once you start with someone, that, you know, we stick with you the whole time. But I think it's very important that you know who they are because they're really well-qualified. Jen Reichel is, does searches along with me, and so she is kind of a senior person who reviews things with me. We also have Morgan Taylor, who, excuse me, who helps in a variety of ways. She does research for us. She helps with writing, and she, she along with, I am reviewing every single application. I think it's important that you have more than one set of eyes on each application. So that helps us ensure that we don't miss something. She's also doing kind of the online research about the folks and helping with drafting interview questions, things like that. She is getting her MPA right now. So those are, those are our team members, and we also have a very qualified, amazing office staff who make sure that the books get there and all the materials are well proofread and all of those things which are equally important. And so that is the team behind us. I want to just stop there and see if I can respond to questions, and thank you very much for letting me go through that.
Okay. Questions from any of you council regarding what she's presented? And then we do have about nine questions we'll ask you, but perhaps there's some things that you know haven't come up that will not be asked in the questions. Councilmember Wink.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm asking this because I don't want to assume. So you talked about your robust client network, or the, the engagement opportunities for sending your email blasts and soliciting, right, the responses from the prospective candidates? So do you mind talking a little bit more specifically about what those resources are?
Certainly. So we, I, I would say there are three ways that we do that, not counting ad postings all, which of course you do. The first is, we have a really, really large applicant database. People have applied before. So we always send information unless they've asked us not to. So we send information to them. That is not necessarily the strong pool because there, we have kind of eliminated the folks that didn't meet requirements, kind of basically, maybe they just saw it and thought they might try to be a city manager but have zero experience at all. So those folks, we've kind of weeded out, so they're local government professionals, but maybe they are not at the level where you're looking for. So, but that can trigger them, sending them to other people, too. We then have the lists that we do targeted for each individual search. So for the city of Lewisville, we have our targeted list of emails and folks that we contacted directly. Lafayette, same thing.
So are you doing a, if it's a same position, sorry to interrupt, are you doing a segmentation based on the specific geography?
Yes.
That, then, for that position, what's particular to that geography to get the best-
So it could be geography, it could be, so we've targeted in the recruitment plan where, where we are going to target. So that's one of the things we would talk about. So in one community, it might, they might, they're really interested in folks from Colorado and maybe all the states touching them. So that would be maybe what would be in one of those lists. But those are lists that we created for other jurisdictions. So we do use those, but we create a new one for you because your, your particular characteristics might be different. What you're looking for might be different. So we've done a number of university communities, for example. Those are all over the country, and if they're, if it's a large public university, that's a different set of cities than if they have multiple small, private universities. So it's things like that. In some cases, resiliency, sustainability, things like that are really important. So we have kind of a list of communities and that we're targeting, and those might be all over the country. So it, it is looking not just at geography, not just at similar population, but also looking at more specific things.
Right. Thank you.
Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you. You touched on community engagement and input from the public during this process. Can you talk about some examples or ways that you've worked with communities that was really effective? And then how do you gather that input from community members?
So there's a lot of different ways you can do it. Some can be effective in one place and maybe not as effective in another. So we do, anytime we're doing a search, regardless of what, I'm always talking to department heads, the staff. So that's a group that I'm, that I'm engaging that is, maybe they're part of your community, but they're part of your organization, they're really important parts. I'm always doing that, and that can be in small groups, it can be in large groups. In one community, we did an online survey for all the employees because that was value in that community broader than just those that were direct reports on the senior staff. So it, it has to match sort of the value and what's important and what the practice has been in that community. In the community side, some of the most effective, what, what has worked very well in communities that have strong civic organizations, strong nonprofit, faith-based, particular institutions, chamber business, you know, those kinds of groups, if they, if those are well-defined and well-organized and used to being engaged, those can be very effective kind of focus groups. In some communities, that's not really the case, and so it, or it feels like all the special people get asked, and what about the regular citizens? So, so you have to, it has to work for that community. In some communities, an online survey is fantastic because that's the way that people, I'm thinking of a couple places where there's a lot of commuters. It's a younger population, they don't want to come to a meeting, they want to engage differently. So that can be very effective. In other places, that is like, you might as well not even put it online because, you know, it's not, no one's going to do it. So it has to match what works. In some communities, the council says, you know what, we want to invite people to come to our meetings. That's what people are used to doing. And so they come and they make a, they hear from anyone who wants to provide input, and then those folks, you know, you have the minutes from it, and so you already have a record of that. In other communities, the council would say, well, we hear from the same 10 people every time. We want to reach out to people that we don't reach out to. So I would, that's one of the questions that I actually ask you in that phone interview to get a feel for what is important to you and how would it work best? But there's not one way that always works the best. Thank you.
We'll go ahead and start with the council questions then. And, Councilmember Martinez, why don't we just continue with you? Would you ask the first, and then we'll come around this way?
Sure. The first question is, what process will you use to understand the challenges and opportunities facing the Inglewood community while assessing the varied priorities of citizens, council members, and staff?
Okay.
You kind of touched on that a little bit, though.
Right. So obviously, like, you know, I've looked online, I've read the newspaper articles, I've looked at what you have on your website, not every single thing, but you know, I, so I have kind of a very cursory understanding, but that's different than talking to individually. It's different than hearing from department heads. It's different from having either data that comes back from an online survey or from listening to people in focus groups. That's when you begin to hear, the reason integrity is important to us is because listen to the story that happened, and this is why that matters. And so those are the kinds of things that help really drive the points of what, what issues have been in your past. I'm also, while I'm interested in your past because it helps to find where you are, I'm really interested in your future because you want a manager for the future. And so I'm particularly interested in kind of what the council goals are and where you see the biggest future challenges for you. And I have, so that's, I think, how I would describe how we get that. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember-
Dave Questa, describe your understanding of the strategic, operational, and financial importance of the Inglewood city manager position.
Repeat that one more time.
Absolutely, you bet. Describe your understanding of the strategic, operational, and financial importance of the Inglewood city manager position.
So putting on my strategic planning hat for a second, obviously, the council and the elected body are really the body that sets the vision and the strategic direction of the community. But frequently, you all turn over, and you might, you might have newer members, or you might have folks who that's not their, they prefer to work kind of helping to resolve constituent issues. And so the manager frequently plays a really critical part in looking at the strategic issues. First, they should know, hopefully, that you want someone who can kind of look around the corner and see what's coming. And they, they have a better sense of some of the, and some of this goes into operational issues, which may become strategic. If you are, if you're trying to redevelop a section of your community that, I'm thinking of whomever had the vision to make this happen, that was not actually just one council, I would suspect. That was multiple councils. And the manager, I think, can, has been through probably longer than maybe some of the existing council members might have been on that. And so they should be able to help point out things that they learned from past redevelopments. Also, I think they help, you look at some of the very practical things that go along with it. How are, how are we going to make sure we have enough water? And how are we going to make sure that the, that when, and I'm thinking of this, you know, it looks like you, when the mall left, you retained some of the parking, and so you didn't maybe have to build a garage because you had parts, when I'm making some assumptions based on looking. And so that is something that, if you're really thinking forward in the future, you might necessarily be thinking about all the different parking. And parking is a thing that might change pretty dramatically in the future. So you want your manager really helping to focus the council on what some of those strategic issues are. They're definitely over all of the operations, and you want to make sure that they're developing staff within each department so that they can make good decisions because the manager cannot be over every operational decision. You need to have well-qualified department heads and key staff underneath them making good decisions. And, and so they really help, and that's, that is definitely their realm. And then the, the financial part, you have a fiduciary responsibility. They have, developing the proposed budget is one of the most important tasks that a manager has. So they must, while they might not be the one developing each portion of the budget, they need to be asking, how does this align with the council's goals? How does this fit in with the priorities that we've been talking about? How does it get us closer to what we need to do? And how does it protect not just the taxpayer of today, but the taxpayer of tomorrow?
Very good. Thank you.
Councilmember Wink?
I am Cheryl Wink, and I represent Inglewood at large. And my question is, describe the steps you will take to recruit the most qualified candidates for this position. And I understand you, you mentioned a lot of this in your, you know, initial statements to us. So if there's anything you didn't cover then, in, you know, in the effort of you not repeating yourself, that you'd like to add or please do?
The only other thing that I neglected to mention, and it's one of the reasons why our firm formed, and it's one of the reasons why I'm in executive recruitment, is our, our firm belief and dedication to making sure that we have the most qualified people that also reflect our communities. And so we're pretty proud of our, the placements. We do not select people. That's not our role. But we need to make sure that there are good candidates to be selected. And so over, our percentages change, you know, you can, it can change with one or two recruitments, but we are generally between 22 and 25% people of color and about 36 to 40% female in terms of the placements. And that does not happen, that is not the reflection of what's in the applicant pool. That is not the reflection of what you see. We have to work really hard because those folks are very much in demand, and you have to work hard to encourage them to apply for positions because they're very sought after. Local governments are not great in the administration of reflecting kind of the overall community in, in many places. Some places they are. So.
Thank you very much.
Evening. And my question is, describe in detail your recommended process for selecting and interviewing finalists. At what points in the search process will you seek guidance or feedback from city council or city staff?
So at the beginning, I mentioned in the phone interview, one of the questions we would be talking about is a little bit about targeted recruitment and community engagement. I would also be asking you a little bit about what kind of process. And I, we would talk through, one of the reasons I have these conversations is to be able to have a conversation about kind of the pros and cons of different ways of doing it and hearing from you about what your values are. I think it is essential that a recruitment process reflects the job and the values of the organization and the, the community that it serves. So I, in, in terms of what I'm doing ahead of time, I am doing some screening based on what you all, what we've already agreed to in the profile, and then I'm bringing you more people so you can choose from them. I believe very strongly you all should be selecting, and that means I shouldn't be selecting or trying to influence you in any way about the candidates. My job is to tell you as much as possible about each of them and then help guide you so you can make good choices in who you, as you narrow that pool down. In terms of the finalist interviews, I think it is, it's essential that you have, you show them, you showcase your community. That's an important part. And so I always recommend a tour of- And so I always recommend a tour of some sort. And who gives it, we'll have a conversation about. But it's a, it's a great opportunity for them to see it in a way that's different than when they drive themselves around the communities because they get to hear some of the stories from the people who are, who are the tour guides. So I do think that's a very important part. I think it's also important that there is some mechanism for the, and I'm making some assumptions based on my knowledge of the law here and how your attorney would interpret it, because those are not always the same as you go from community to community, that the finalists would be in a public interview process. And so I would encourage that, that process focus on you all interviewing and others observing. And those that are observing can provide feedback in a written form that can be considered as part of it. Because it's a job interview. It's not an election. So that, that would be the way I would suggest. Now, I don't know what you all think. We haven't had that conversation, but that's, that, and I do think it's important for the candidate to have, and I, they need to understand what the community thinks. They need to understand what, how the organization, the people that they would be working with. And so I think it is really important for the candidate to get to meet the people that they're going to be working with most directly. And although you all are the bosses, the majority of their time is spent in the city organization itself. And so some element that would include an opportunity for department heads or other key staff to meet them because they will have, they will have questions that they will want to ask your acting manager that they're not going to ask you. You know, it's an operational question or it's a, it's more specific than, than they would expect a council member to, to really want to have a conversation about. They would want to save that for a different venue. So I would, those are some of the elements. I think you need someone who can write, so I think you have to have some sort of writing element. I think you need someone who can present. The interview process itself can provide you with that. You can also provide other things. There are lots of different ways you can do it and I would talk to you about some of those. But in, in short, that's what I would say.
Thank you. You've sort of answered the, this one, but I'm going to repeat it and then you can ask, add any more. What are the qualifications and experience of the project manager who will be handling Inglewood's search? I'm assuming it is you.
It is me.
And then how can we be assured that you will prioritize our search and provide direct, consistent, and hands-on management of the process?
Right. So I'm going to leave behind just some information. It's got my card in there. My card has my cellphone. My cellphone is the best way to reach me. I just got a text yesterday from the Mayor of Lafayette who asked me a question, just like not about, just something about the process, not about the person. And, you know, so I, I expect that you all may have questions that may come up during the process. And I would, I, we would have a conversation about how those should be collectively done. But if, if, if you and I, if you and I are having a conversation or you and I are having a conversation, you and I are having a conversation, initially, before I come, I want you to have my contact information because you may think of something else before I come that would be helpful. So that's more of a listening. I, like a good city manager, I make sure that the will of the body is where, and that's why we develop a plan and we kind of work the plan. But that's, I guess, the way I would say, are, we, I was asked about Louisville has had, I've done two department head searches and in the middle, in between those, there was another department head that they did. And I was asked, did you do that? I did not do that one because we were too busy. It, you, you have to, you have, you can't say yes if you can't do the work. So we don't, we don't respond to all the RFPs that are out there. And when repeat clients call us and ask us if we can't do it, we let them know or we talk about the timing. So.
Can I just follow up with that of why did you decide to take our RFP then?
So if you knew me, you would know that sometimes the truth just blurts out of me, which is not always a great characteristic. We applied for the city manager search before. I've been in this room before. I've been interviewed in this room before and we didn't get it. And we also applied to do your city attorney search. We didn't get that either. So this is the last time I'm coming. But I have faith in you. So we, it is, you're a, a community of the size and that I think is like, just this great size. You can know lots of people. You can know your neighbors. You can know the people, you can know 450 employees. You know, there, it is a great size. I think the Denver metropolitan area is really exciting. I think there are a lot of, I, I have been impressed with the talent that I have met through the recruitment processes that I have done in, in this area. And I particularly appreciate how the council is much more diverse than many of the councils that I see across the country. So it kind of hits some of those chords for me personally.
Thank you. And I do remember.
You, you said it was, you wanted to take this because it's a diverse council. Is that what, I just want to write that quote down and put it on my mirror now. So I appreciate that comment.
I'm talking about the diversity, that the makeup, the diversity that reflects, is more reflective of the community than I see from a racial and ethnic.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Thanks for the clarification. What is your current workload and availability? Well, you already did that really. But what is your current workload again and availability? Describe in detail your project timeline. That might add that.
Sure. So if you were to select us or anyone, you would, we would, they would want to work with a contract. We would want a contract too. So as soon as that timing was, and we got that, then what we would do is I would send kind of an information request, anything that I hadn't already gathered on the website, and ask and give available times to have phone conversations with you all. So that generally happens within two weeks of when we get a contract. So the whole search process takes anywhere from 12 to 16 weeks, depending on things like your budget schedule and your, you know, vacation schedule and things like that. So we would work out the recruitment plan that I would provide to you upfront and that would be the timing. And I would ask you all to, we, we wouldn't change interviews and, you know, those things. It's hard to get a body together. And so that's how we make sure we can commit to those because those dates are firm and we don't change them and we ask you not to change them too. And so that's how we would do it. I have, January is a great time. Everyone, if, if we responded to this because of the timing of it, if we'd gotten this proposal in September, we would have said no because we had a lot of work, a lot of people want to have someone selected before the December holidays. So that, the timing of it was good. I think you asked specifically, I want to answer your question specifically. I have a town manager search in Virginia that is just kicking off and I have the Chief Financial Officer in Loveland, which is a partial search, so it doesn't go all the way through. And we have, my colleague Jen has a city manager search in, in Arizona. And we have a transportation, traffic and transportation engineer, one of those hard-to-fill positions in Bloomington, Indiana right now.
Thank you very much.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Wink. Do you want to follow up on that?
Thank you. Just to clarify, I didn't quite hear your comment as Member Barrington paraphrased it. I believe that you responded to the mayor in, in her question to, about why specifically you, you applied here. I didn't hear you say you applied here because we have a diverse council. I believe you gave us three different points and one of which was sort of an offshoot. I mean, you said, you talked about Denver and where Denver was now and today and.
Seismic.
You've been here. Do you mind reiterating that? Because I thought you gave a bigger answer and that a smaller piece of it was that you appreciated the fact that we were more diverse than you'd seen, having come here twice before, and you appreciated that movement, but it wasn't all you said.
Right. Actually, I wasn't talking about the movement on this council in being diverse. I'm talking about all the places that I go.
Thank you.
That are not, where, where people are primarily all-in-one age group or all-one gender or all-one race and ethnicity. But the main thing is it's an amazing place, the Denver area. I think, I like the fact that there are some similar, I didn't say this before, but there are some similarities with other communities that have transitorian development and infill and those are difficult and exciting at the same time. And the size of the community, I know I said, and so those are the things.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you so much for that clarification.
Councilmember Ciara.
Yeah. Could you describe a search that ended with an unfavorable outcome? What did you learn from that search that you would do differently now? What instructions and support do you give clients to help avoid unsuccessful searches?
It should probably alarm you how quickly I can answer this question. My mistakes and things that don't go well are what help me get better. I feel like I learned way more from those things. And I learned a lot from this one. So I had a search in a community that I will not describe more than it had, the process was laid out very prescriptively in the RFP in terms of, they had already appointed a search committee, which did not include anyone on the council. Is that right? One, no. One person from each party, because it was a, a place where they declare Democrat and Republican. And so one person from each party, the outgoing retiring manager and a whole lot of community people. And that was the group that I, I was engaged with the whole time until second interviews. That's when the whole council came together. It didn't go well. I mean, they selected someone. It's the only time I've, I had to kind of physically get between two elected officials because they were, because I didn't want them to do something silly. And what I learned from that is I will, if you told me right now that you have a citizen search committee and I'm not going to be talking to you all, I would say, you should pick another firm. Because I think, I, I feel very strongly, you all are the governing body and you are the hiring authority and you are the supervising authority. And so whatever input you need to get and we need to get for that process, that's great. But the decision makers need to be engaged the entire time. So that's one thing. And I believed that, but I didn't have the conviction of having seen what can happen. It was a very divided council anyway. I think that's why they thought, oh, we'll just let, we'll just let this other group take care of it and then we won't fight. But it just kind of kicked the problem down the road. And I, so, so that, I guess, would be the one. They did, they did select someone, but I don't feel like it was a great process.
So could I ask a follow-up to that?
Please do.
So initially, you had, I've got feeling that it wasn't the right process, but you went along with it.
Right. I did.
And so did you make your concerns known to the initial search committee that?
Right.
This wasn't the right process or just elaborate on that?
Not to the search committee. So it was, I was interviewed by the city attorney and the HR director. They selected, you know, they did that interview. And I brought it up at the interview and I said, I have some concerns. I'm worried about it. Can we engage? No, no, no. The council, they're all, they've, you know, they've all agreed to it. It's going to be fine. So I did bring it up, but I did not bring it up to the group once they came together because when we said yes, we said yes to what they asked for. So that's on me.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So my question is, excuse me, what services can the city expect after completion of the search? And what is your guarantee policy?
After the search, and I want to be clear on this, we will be in touch in a, so I'll want to make sure it went well, right? Everyone should be happy the day they arrive. We do try to check in with the manager after that. Sometimes we check in with the mayor, but sometimes the mayor changes. So, and you know, we don't have a relationship with the new mayor. So we do try to kind of check in with the manager. But I want to clarify, it's not like we come out and visit and we meet every quarter. It's not that. That would be a different level of service. We have been asked in separate engagements to help with evaluations. So that's something that we do. It's not included in what we have proposed on. And we have also helped with council goal setting sessions and department head meetings, you know, to kind of help the team coalesce well. We have done those different things, but those are separate. Our, our policy, I, I, and our, I think you asked for 18 months in guarantee. You know, if, if the person leaves and on 18 months and three days, we're going to honor it, you know? I mean, we want you to have the right person and for that person to have good experience. I will say though, the most important component of whether it's successful or not are the people around this table. You have a vested interest and only you can really help make that person be successful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Questa.
You bet. Why should we rely on you to be the credible ambassador for the city?
There's a practical reason and that is, it's really hard for you all to do this by yourselves. So I think you need to have someone do that. I would make an argument that there is nothing that I hold more precious than representing each community to the applicants. And of course, you don't know how I interact with them, but I can tell you that we have had multiple referrals where someone who was an applicant in our process goes somewhere or is in a community and because of the process they went through as an applicant, they ask us to do a search there. And these are not people that got the job. These are the people that didn't get the job. And to me, that's really, those are the referrals I'm the most proud of. Of course, the person that we work with might want us to come back because they had a good experience. They got the job. But it's much more important how we treat everyone in the process. We are the city of Inglewood when we are talking to folks. And that's whether someone is, you know, making sure we got their materials or it's someone we've, we're actively searching and encouraging to come and why. I also think it's important they have a realistic view of what the job is, which plays into your question. So I encourage them to do their homework and I want to share with them what the job really is. And so that comes from making sure you all have agreed what the job really is.
Thank you.
Are there any further follow-up questions to the ones we've asked that have come to mind? No? Councilmember Barrington? Okay. Okay. So, we have time for you to ask, I'm sorry, I have time for you to ask questions, and then perhaps other things will come up, but would you like to ask us?
Well, there are questions. I have a lot of questions. One, I would ask is, how, what kind of community involvement do you envision for this process? What do you think matches Inglewood's values, and would result in good feedback for you all?
Great. Someone like to kick off with any ideas? Councilmember Martinez.
I would say some level of community involvement. We have a lot of really active board and commission volunteers. I would like to get their input, as well as just making it available to anyone in the community who may want to provide input, learn more, what form or shape that would take. I don't know what will be best, but I think having the opportunity, a lot of members in our community really like to share their thoughts. So, I think it would be good to give them an opportunity to do that.
Other thoughts?
Sure. Well, mine would be right along those same lines. Inglewood, I think, is extremely transparent, and it's, that's citizen-driven. It's one of the things that citizens have rightfully come to expect, and it's something they take advantage of as well. So, I'm not sure exactly what the process would look like, that we actively engage citizens as much as we can. But there will be the demand for that, I think, from the citizens. And there'll probably be several more conversations to figure out how we do that. I think we're going to need more than one avenue to collect as many opinions as possible. And this is a critical position. I would love to hire a manager that is here for a duration, really for a long time. And so, really, the more feedback we can get to find that right person, the qualities we're looking for, I think would go a long way. And then, I think the citizens appreciate it as well, knowing that they were given every opportunity to be involved along the way. Thank you.
Any others?
So, I was involved in the last, in the last two that you applied for, but a couple of the things that I found really helpful was when we had groups of different stakeholders, such as staff and directors in particular, that met and gave similar feedback on each, or gave feedback in the same kinds of forms and comparatively for all the candidates. Not telling us who to go for, but pluses and minuses that they saw. Same thing with the citizens. We had an open meeting with them with each of those two sets of searches, and had feedback cards that were useful. I loved your perspective, I think, about this isn't, you know, this isn't the citizens voting for the person, we have to make the final decision. But it helps to have lots of input and different perspectives. I would love the idea of a survey about our, on the front end, a little bit more about what we want in a city manager, and have our businesses, business community, which were also involved in the city manager search the last time. There was a number of people from the community, kind of, some business owners, some nonprofit, and I think the chamber, and perhaps a few other folks were on it. So, I do think that we haven't had, I think we've had a general sort of sense that, yes, we all agree we want to have some community engagement, but we haven't sort of sat down and figured out what exactly it would be, and we need to do that work when we're ready to go. So, being led through that process of what you think could work and what doesn't, it's important.
I think it was unfortunate for the, for one of the positions. It was kind of like a last-minute idea to have a town hall meeting. We had had a very long-term city manager prior to that, and so, it was, you know, a little new for the community, but it wasn't exactly, it was a push from the community, not necessarily something that had kind of been vetted out previously. So, I had, kind of had that in there. And then, just a huge change in the last four years in the makeup of our employees, because, I mean, we have a huge amount of new employees. So, to try and reach out to a little bit more diverse stakeholder group, so that you have a little bit more of the history, culture, kind of the character integrity of the community, being in there would probably be of value, because you have, when you replace that kind of institutional knowledge and history, you know, you won't have to replace it with something. So, I would agree with the mayor in that maybe even past things like just the chamber or something, that we have a little bit more diverse stakeholder group identified there.
What else?
A follow-up to that? So, what do you do when you get, I mean, I can't imagine that even in this room, you would all agree. So, of course, it would make sense. And, and you're reflective of the community that you represent. So, what happens when you get feedback that is conflicting? How do you resolve that? So, that's one of the things, that's a more, you can, you can answer if you like, but it's more of a rhetorical question that I would ask you about, as we, if you engage with us, it will be part of what, what, how, how will you use the feedback that you get? And what will you do when you get feedback that is conflicting, which inevitably you will get, because it's a, not everybody has the same opinion, whether it's on the same council or in the same family. So, you know, just being clear to your constituents about how their feedback will be used, and being clear with each other about how you will, how you will use that as well, I think is really important, so. Another question I had is, what, what, how can I phrase this? You have, I think...
Could I, while you're forming your thoughts, could I ask you a clarification question?
Yes.
Do you have any idea for what you brought up about how you would, I mean, I get a sense from you that you're saying you would like to honor, that if we're going to ask the community for feedback, that we're going to make sure that they understand how we're, how we're processing that and how we're using that.
Right.
How does that look to you? I mean, I think that's a good point that you bring up, but how does that look to you?
So, it is, I think, and you may not agree with my opinion, but my opinion would be, if you're going to ask for feedback, you are really clear that it is input, not a vote, and that you, you are getting input from lots of different viewpoints, many of which might not have the same opinion on the same. So, I, as a staff member, I might be looking for one thing in a boss that might be different than if I am a resident and have had a problem with stormwater, or, you know, traffic situation, or police, or, you know, something like that. So, I might, I might be singularly focused in different directions. And so, I think it's, I would say it's important that you clarify that it's not, you're not going to tally, you're going to hear it, you, you're going to retain the role that you were given, which is to hire and fire this person.
Thank you for the clarification.
That's what I mean.
Sorry, go ahead.
Mayor Portem, too, as well.
And can I ask you, how, if we decide we want community feedback, or staff feedback, how would you capture that information? I mean, how do you suggest that we would capture that information?
So, when we do, and I'm, I'm using the word "survey," but I should clarify, it is not statistically significant. It's more like an online input form. We just call it a survey. It asks questions. We have done, we generally write a summary memo, where we kind of, you know, code the things and give, sort of, here are the themes. We also sometimes provide all the comments as an attachment. You know, we would talk to you about what you would like. You know, if, if you have to read everything and want to, fantastic. If it would help you for us to, you know, synthesize some of that, because we're looking at it, but you all are making the decision. So, you all are the ones who really need to look at it. I find it's very helpful to post kind of the results up on the website, because then the candidates can read it also. You know, it can be something that is part of their input process. Not every community wants to do that. I always make sure that the people who are invited to interviews have that information, but...
Thank you. And you were in the process of formulating another question, so I apologize for that.
No, no, no. I'm not sure it was a great question. So, I think I am, I am interested in how, how you, how you will be looking at candidates from outside of this area. Because I think it's important that, that it's a, you know, it's really an open process, and it's, we would recommend a national search, although, obviously, people who have experience in a particular, you know, part of the country might have a leg up. And so, I just, you know, that's one of my questions, is, are there, are there other jurisdictions that you routinely would say, here are some of the places we really would, we look at, and they might be across the country? Or are you more focused on kind of the Denver metro area? Just give me a sense of that, in terms of how you look at examples, because that might give me some sense of how open and interested you might be from other parts of the country.
So, just to kick us off, we have not really had a conversation about that specifically. So, it'd be good, this is a good first time we've really probably opened this up, or we've had maybe a general assumption that we, it's a national search, but go ahead, Councilmember Link.
Thank you, Mayor. I do, that's a brilliant question, and, and one that would serve us well to have a discussion about, an honest discussion with each other, so that we're aligned by the time we've selected a search firm and are moving forward. But at this time, I think collectively, we wouldn't have a solid answer to that, just because we haven't had that conversation.
Do you have an opinion about it you'd like to share?
I have an opinion, yeah. I feel that there's an inherent bias toward people that know Colorado, and probably know jurisdictions that are close to Inglewood within Colorado. That's probably naturally there. Personally, I mean, I've lived all over, everywhere, and, but personally, it, it doesn't have to be some, I'm not looking for a Colorado person, but I know that we might, you know, it might happen.
Right.
So, I think it would be healthy to, that's my opinion, maintain an open mind. I would like to go into this with an open mind, at least, speaking for myself only. And welcome, and, and to evaluate all candidates equally, based on the breadth of experience and what we put in the RFP.
Great. Councilmember Barantin?
Sierra.
Sierra?
I'm sorry.
I'm so glad you joined me in doing that. That's a second time in two.
I was just trying to make her look good.
Councilmember Sierra?
Thank you, Member Barantin. So, I haven't really been looking at it in terms of geography. I've been thinking about it more in terms of, you know, finding a person that's qualified that, that has experience with a suburban city, but that is part of a larger urban area. I think that initially is what my initial requirement is, when I think about what type of person I want as a city manager, but also just some of the things that go along with that, in terms of, you know, the potential of a redevelopment here within this area, having knowledge with that, having knowledge of, just working with potential developers, and what type of questions, and that type of thing, that, just having a good understanding of that as, you know, as part of their background. So, it wasn't necessarily just in terms of Colorado-specific, I really want to open it up nationally, to try to get the best candidates regarding that, that specifically.
Councilmember Barantin?
I think part of the problem is that we hear a lot about just the size and the population of the city. You know, we might be size-wise, population-wise comparable to Cherry Hills, we are not comparable to Cherry Hills. So, there are a lot of other factors that play into that. While it's in the state of Colorado, we're a little bit more aware of what those differences are that would, that would bring that up, and so, sometimes you can lean to a little bit more understanding of what they've done, and sometimes a little, actually, the opposite, where you have a little bias against it. Maybe you know, you know things that have happened in that other community, you know stuff, the people, maybe other council members, some of their projects, issues and problems that they have. So, sometimes there's a little bit of fantasy in having somebody come nationally, and you want, you want that, and you want that kind of diversity of thought, some, you know, little expansion of maybe what's been going on outside of just the confines of the state of Colorado. But that also leads to a lot of problems, too, because you don't have that familiarity of what might have happened and what's going on. So, that's why it's very important that the search, when you go nationally, that you have that media check, that you have that community check, that somebody's checking to see what's going on in meetings, if they have experience, and how they're handling contentious issues, and if there's been issues, if they're running away from something. And, and so, in just checking some of the searches that have happened, I think that there's been kind of a push previously to kind of go a little bit more nationally, because we kind of cycled through some people in the state of Colorado, and that's kind of evolving out. And then, you have a little push now from those people who have been placed constantly, you know, now I hear from citizens, not just from here, but, I mean, other communities where they go, oh, I can't stand it, because they're always saying, well, here's how it was in Arizona, here's how it was in Oregon. And so, I don't know whether that's pushing back a little bit more, but I certainly do want the national search. But it, it comes with pros and cons both, both ways. I don't think we're necessarily pro somebody in Colorado, but it does come with the, with knowing a little bit more familiarity of what's happened and what's going on, and maybe some already connections that, that you don't know. Where we're going nationally, you know, sometimes we kind of fantasize that maybe that's a little bit better, and not having all of the experience with what might have happened in that community, or what that community is, is based on, if somebody's just going on the population. So, I think you did a pretty good job of going on that. I want to do the national search, but I know that it comes with pros and cons.
Councilmember Martinez?
I will keep an open mind during this process. I, you know, there are advantages to having Colorado applicants, but I don't think that that's going to, you know, make me shy away from others. I think kind of what Councilmember Sierra said, it, to me, it's more related to the issues that are, that we face, you know, like, we have water rights, so that's going to be very important. Also, you know, infrastructure, and the utilities that we have, and things like that. So, I'm going to be looking more towards kind of experience or a skill set that will help us with our particular issues that we're facing, and the future challenges that we have, and opportunities.
Councilmember Quest?
Thank you. I, I think I'm in agreement with, with everyone here, that a great candidate can come from anywhere. I would prefer what we provide ourselves, the citizen staff, with the widest selection of choice that we can, and then really filter it down from there and find that best candidate. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll weigh in, too. You've helped us with a great discussion, so. I, too, very much want it to be a really wide search. My, my concern is that we get really a person who wants to be here, and, and that is challenging for different people from different parts of the country, and from, from the metro area and the state. So, there are different pros and cons for them in choosing this place, and I want to make sure that this is a good fit for them, as we pick that person and realize they've got the skill set to do what we really want them to do. There wasn't any push in the last two searches at all for anybody out of state or in-state. We were very open-minded about that as well. There may have been citizens who wanted certain things a certain way, and, but in terms of a council, we were really pretty open. I think the only thing that was maybe limiting in our city attorney search was trying to find somebody who could practice here, and even in that, and even in that case...
Right.
We had a bit of a, of a, of a, maybe communication breakdown or whatever, and we got a great person who still, we had to wait a little while for, because they weren't able to practice here. So, I, I really think we'll, the widest the search is the best for the, the good of Inglewood, to get the best. Because I think this is a really cool place for someone to come, and it should be a really great job for them, so throw the net wide. Any other questions?
No, I think that's it.
Great. Well, any further comments you want to make in closing?
Just thank you so much for inviting us to come, our firm. Very proud of the work we've done, and I'm also very, hold it very dear, the importance of this search fee. This is the most important decision you're going to make as a group, and regardless of who you select, I encourage you to listen to each other, and to be open to building consensus around one person, and then just supporting that person, whomever you select. It's a really difficult job, maybe not as difficult as the jobs that you all do, but different, difficult in a different way, and I just, it would... And I just, it would, it would be a high honor to be able to work with you on that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time with us and you wanted us to.
Well, they're not my cardists here. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Captain, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Captain. Another pleasure, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And have a very safe trip back home and you could give them to the HR. Okay, yeah, yeah. Do you leave tomorrow?
I do.
Take a little time.
Oh, dark thirty.
Oh, gosh.
Thank you.
Have a great, a great weekend and hope that there isn't any snow before you leave.
I think I leave before it's coming.
Okay, great.
You're a little better at it than where I live.
Counsel, we're, we're finished early and our intent originally was to do some discussion. I'll let her leave.
Thank you.
Want to ask you a question. Thanks so much. So in the decision-making process, because this all occurred sort of after we had a mayor manager, Portem scheduling meeting, we haven't figured out how we're going to handle yet. So we can decide to spend some time this evening if you want, talking about it until nine o'clock, or if you want us to just hobnob and figure it out and find a place to do it either. I can't assure that it would be this next Monday because it's pretty tight, but for sure the following one we would. But that's a lot of time between now and then. So what would be your druthers tonight? Would you like to spend fifteen, twenty minutes doing what you thought was the best of any of these and then think about it? Councilmember Barantine.
I would really kind of like to digest some of the information and, and do it that way, to try and bring the two, three together because it, in comparing my notes, I want to make sure that I'm doing which one is which one. So I would prefer to have a little bit of time to digest it. I think it would be a little, because we just got done listening to the two of them.
Yeah. Yeah, it was ambitious for us to think we were going to do that after one. Councilmember Sierra, your thoughts?
Was, there's definitely highlights that I can point out from the three. I do want to digest the data and kind of go over it, but there's definitely things that stuck out with each, the three that we interviewed, so.
Let me just keep going on. Councilmember Martinez.
Yeah, I already have some standouts in my mind as well, but I think it would be to digest a little bit. Bless you. But if, maybe if we have feedback between now and the next time we discuss it on maybe how to go about having that discussion, can we just like reach out to you and give you some thoughts?
Sure, about process?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Councilmember.
Yeah, I would be in alignment with that. Some absorption, absorption time would be good, but it was a great bunch and that's why I need to think about and kind of split them apart in the, in the highs and lows of each. But yeah, great bunch. I'm thrilled that we had those three and some time for me to think about it would be great, too. Are we on the timeframe of when we need to make a decision by?
Yeah, our decision will come before the regular meeting. I think it's February fourth.
Thank you.
Right? So we have time to do it and then, no, so, yes, yes, we have to make a decision and then it'll take a couple, it could take up to two weeks for negotiation for all of the details. So it's going to be two weeks further into February probably for when we really get this formal process of they're starting and we're starting.
Sure, okay. Thank you.
Good question. Councilmember Wayne.
Thanks, Mayor. I do, I do agree with what everyone's said so far. I, I have my numerical scores, so quantitatively I know where my thoughts stood from their interviews, but I want to also add some qualitative assessment of all the notes I took and marry the two. So the time would be really good. One thing I do want to ask for, which is a, an extension of what Member Martinez said is, is maybe that when we come together next to discuss this, that we're not coming together just like this and then speaking. That maybe, as I think Mr. Questa said, we, we've submitted forms or, we submitted something and it's been aggregated in some format so we can start from a place so that the discussion doesn't take longer than is necessary. Interim City Manager has it come up.
All right.
Just a question.
Go ahead.
You know, the score sheets, one to five, you know.
Right, easy Likert scale.
It's easy. Certainly not all the data. But if you wanted to compile that, send that to me, I can certainly put that in the grid and say, you know, this candidate was all threes, this one is all fives, or something like that. And, you know, if you wanted me to, to capture comments altogether in one document so that you could see it in written form, whatever you would like us to help you to do, we'd be glad to do that.
Thank you. I'm going to go on to Mayor Portem and then you've raised a completely second question, so.
Okay, I, I am pretty much in agreement with what has been shared. I want time to dig, to adjust it. But I think that our numbers and our comments are our comments. And I think that we ought to spend time and come prepared to discuss. I'm against sharing the information on the notes that I took. We all heard things differently, so that's my opinion on that.
So you don't want to aggregate scores at all or have a kind of summary score?
Then aggregate, not raw scores?
No.
Aggregate would be no one score would show, it'd just be an average.
I wouldn't say Rita said this, it would be just an average of this or an average of that.
No. Okay. Councilmember Barantine.
This process needs to be done transparently and in public, and doing it that way does not accommodate that. And so I would not be for doing, doing that piece of it. I think that the conversation, all of the conversation, including how you came to those aggregate scores, number scores, statistical scores, whatever score you end up coming with, if that's how you want to make your decision, is discussed in, in, in public. And that kind of makes it look as if we're kind of doing a bit of this process behind the scenes, and I would not be for that.
Councilmember Questa.
You bet. You know, actually, I don't think those are mutually exclusive. I think we could aggregate them and then discuss it publicly. As a matter of fact, I think that gives them more insight if the public can say, well, here's where the scores came in and then they ended up landing on this group. Not even to say that I have any objection to not using an aggregate either. This is my first go around with this, so when we get in there to make the final decision, this is more procedural. We'll discuss who we like and then eventually somebody will make a motion to hire that firm and then we just vote along those lines. So that's pretty good. Thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember Martinez.
I understand the concerns about the scoring, but I would like us to, Councilmember Wink's point is to start us from a place that's going to be effective in the conversation and not just going around and sharing our random thoughts, like maybe, you know, pros and cons of each firm, maybe we can start there, or ranked, you know, I rank this one one, two, three. Some way to, to start us so that we're not just randomly talking all over the place would be beneficial.
Can I get a point of clarification? So you're talking about having that happen at the meeting and just making sure we have that.
If we're not going to do an aggregate score, I think having some guidelines to say, come, be prepared to say your, you know, top three pros and cons for each one, or just pros, or rank, you know, I rank, you know, firm one as number two and firm three as number one, you know, like my top, my order of choice. Someplace to start us if, in, in terms of the discussion.
I appreciate the clarification. I would agree with you on that.
Mayor Portem.
And I think that perhaps we're making this more difficult than it actually is. I think when we were discussing an interim city manager, we came to a conclusion fairly quickly. I mean, not, not like we all came in and we were on one page, but it didn't take that long. And I think if we do our homework and think through these points, I think it's going to, I think that we all are able to come to conclusions and, I mean, we did, it went very well the last time.
I got it, too. Are you opposed to us coming with some sort of pro, everybody's got some pros and everybody's got some cons, or some sort of structure so that we all come ready for something like that?
No, I'm, I'm not opposed to that.
You're not opposed to that?
No, I'm not opposed to that.
So why don't we do this? Why don't you send ideas of how we might go about it to interim city manager before Tuesday night? And we will look to see if we can scoot it into Tuesday night discussion at all, but if we can't, we'll let you know. Maybe we need to talk tomorrow, the three of us. Can we, can we do that? And we'll let you know whether we can find time on Tuesday night. Maybe that's what we'll do. We'll send you an email and tell you whether or not we can find time on Tuesday to do it. And if, if that's the case, I think then let's just start out with, everybody does come with three pros, three cons as a start. And if you have another idea about other data, I don't mind sharing my scores on the night of, and anyone who's willing to do that could certainly do that. So we don't want to aggregate it and present those scores, it's fine. I'm glad with sharing that as well, which gives kind of a mix of the two. Go ahead.
Does the question, would that be appropriate from a year's choice?
It could be, yeah. We could just do it in mayor's choice. What I'm worried about is having the meeting go really long and I really want to protect. I really want to protect us from that. Councilmember Sierra.
So is there really a hurry for us to get it or talk about it on Tuesday night? Just because we do have the study session on the 28th.
Yeah.
And we're not going to vote on it until the 4th anyway, so.
Right.
Just wondering if they're, if we have to have that discussion on Tuesday night.
The 28th also is really full, isn't it?
Just to let you know, the contracting process is almost done. They've all seen the draft contract. We'll incorporate their RFP, which is all the standards. So there isn't going to be any negotiation.
Okay.
So we can turn that around very quickly.
Pretty quick. So if we decide on the 4th, it can pretty much happen within the next couple of days and, oh, that, that's good news because I think we were told it's going to take a couple, take a couple. Okay, good to know. Mayor Portem.
I was just going to say, in response to Councilmember Questa, if it's a study session, we can't make a motion and vote. It would have to be at a council meeting. We could come to a consensus if we ended up discussing at a study session. Can we move forward on a consensus?
What you would do by consensus is allow me to draft a contract. The contract would be approved on February 4th. Contract's already done. It's a.
I'm, yeah. I'm going to fill in the blanks with the names of, I'd fill in the blanks with the names and numbers out of that specific RFP, but honestly, I'm, I'm thinking it's going to be a pretty fast turnaround because we all know what the standards are already. All I need to know is which firm we have consensus on and we'll make sure that's on your next agenda.
So you're, you're right, we can discuss it at study session and move it on into that. And we also can study or talk about it at the regular meeting or the study session on Tuesday night. So it's really trying to figure out where the time slot is that we can slip, slip this in without making it really impossible to have a long meeting and, but we certainly can wait one full week. Councilmember Wayne.
As long as we don't compromise our ability to get it done in time.
Yeah. And my worry is that we, this is our decision, so I don't want us to, I mean, the comments at the beginning, I don't want us to go out and ask people, what do you think, what do you think? And I think this is really where we need to decide, is it a group that we can feel good about and have them lead us through this process? And do they have all the bells and whistles we want with it? So do you mind if we go ahead and try and figure out if we can do it this Tuesday and we'll let you know by email? And then if not, we'll give a little bit more time for, but let's everyone agree that you're going to work on some pros and cons as you think about what you've written down already. And maybe, maybe you even rank order them. And if you think, no, I could take any of the three, that's fine, too.
And just a clarification from this point, if you don't mind.
Sure.
It seems that I have had extremely little conversation with any community being interested. They seem to be just fine with us making this decision, so I don't, I don't see that that's going to be an issue. So if you want to just go ahead and have the vote on, on the, I mean, on the 4th, I don't think that's going to create a problem. I think the council will be able to do that, but it's up to whatever you guys want.
Yeah, we've had no people here. We have people probably watching, but anyway, it's good, yeah. I know they're watching. And they're going to have opinions, which they're entitled to have, but decision, okay? All right. We will, we will collaborate and figure it out from here and be looking for your email from, from Dorothy. Thank you for your time and another fifteen minutes on your clock that you have back.
There's not a, like a pendulum. They've all been very professional, done good.